Good morning. It is Wednesday, September 7th. So that isn't right, 27th, 2017. And we're here for our weekly board session in Senator's hearing room, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. We start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We start our meetings with public comment. We do have someone signed up this morning. Ken Hetzel's been a regular contributor. You know the routine. Good morning, Ken.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Kenneth Hetzel and I live at 745 Harris Street Southeast in Salem, Marion County, Oregon. I come today to return the city property from the hands across the bridge, the flowers that y'all brought to us. You really helped us out. We appreciate it. I believe we had a good time. We had a lot of people. I was busy and didn't get a chance to look up. I apologize. It took me three weeks to find you, but I finally found you in the normal place. And thanks for asking about my oral surgery. It's getting better. I'm learning to talk with a lisp and a wiffle. I missed Commissioner Carlson yesterday. I was at the Salem Age Friendly Community Meeting and she sent a proxy. It's an awesome, awesome undertaking to look at and understand the diversity of disability and age. You know, young people look at things different than us old people. You know, we don't walk as far or climb as high or swing as high as a kid does. And children need physical opportunities outside. You know, I think about the Latino boys that drowned in the Olamet River. And I asked a friend, what percentage of the Latino kids know how to swim? And he said, one in 10. And that's a shame. We need to have facilities to teach people to swim. You know, it's basic as riding a bicycle. You know, my grandkids are privileged and they've been at the Y since they were in diapers. You know, they know how to swim. They're seven and nine now. But there's no reason that young people all over the county shouldn't be able to swim and enjoy our creeks and streams and rivers and swimming pools. Thanks. Thanks for your help, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. I do see things different as a younger person than the chair. Yeah.
You're the youngest commissioner.
And that's why you're second vice chair.
He is just a kid, isn't he?
Wow. All right. Because of that, abilities you have and a lot of stamina, we're going to give you one of the longest consent calendars I've seen.
We have presentations before, Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me. I'm so anxious to watch this. All right. Presentation. County Administrative Officer, that would be John Latimer, award for the Health Department Move Team. So John Latimer and Colleen Coons Chafin.
We don't have the walking microphone yet, so I'll stand up here and start. That's all right. Colleen and I are going to do this hopefully together. We've got an interesting thing that we accomplished starting in 2015. We had to move about 168 people and furniture and everything else out of the Center Street Health Department building. And we had some new people here, including Colleen and some of her staff. And the planning, the coordination and all of that that it took to get people out of that building was a county-wide project in many ways. So we're giving, I'm giving the CAO teamwork award for this group that moved the Health Department in and out, or out and in. And the work they did was phenomenal and how quickly they got that, the folks in or out and back in, got them moved to disparate places and made it work. And it worked well. So, you got it?
Just while you're walking up there, not only they move all those people, it had to keep operations going as much as possible, so make the task even harder.
All right. We're going to start with somebody that jumped in with both feet and helped the Health Department with their planning and the work with a whole variety of movers and other folks, including, I think, the Corrections Industries. So to get the Health Department out and get the Health Department back in, and that's Barb Young with the Board's Office. Barb?
Looks like you injured her during this. What's that?
Barb was trying to be a kid last night. Heard her. Yeah. These aren't in any order, by the way, that I know of, are they? Okay. James Whitehouse. I assume James Whitehouse worked for the Health Department.
He's our, did all of our security work, our access controls. So we actually have another, we'll take that and get that to James.
All right. Oh, this guy I know. Larry Tilford with Business Services and Facilities and Business Services. Larry, thank you. Oh, I know this guy too. Ryan Matthews. I wasn't sure I was going to be able to.
I have to go.
Mark. What? Cooper. Who was that? John, who was that?
I have to say about John, John was phenomenal through this whole process. He helped outline a whole bunch of stuff with Mark and Alex. They did a lot of the programming. They did a lot of the outlining, working with our staff. He was just phenomenal in that whole process. Lauren helped on a lot of leases, so we had two big leases, but she ended up going through half the city trying to find some leases. So she did an awesome job by getting that done. So I appreciate it so much.
I think we'll throw this one away.
Okay.
Gracie Fisk. Back there giggling in the back row.
I'm using my RAR and she really worked with Barb and Ryan at the end of the last of this whole session, but trying to get all the surplus stuff. We took the log stuff out, the log stuff in, so she did awesome work. She's part of this team.
Eric Eckfield.
Eric Eckfield is one of the project managers and he also helped get this stuff done. So he was phenomenal through that whole process. Brendan Crossley also was the project manager for Marion County, wasn't able to be here today, but he did also, and tried to keep everybody informed and get things sorted.
Liz Collin.
This is for the, so these are the body members, he's one of the project managers.
Chris Lawyer.
Chris Lawyer, previously with the Health Department. She retired.
It looks like we've left some people out.
Microphone, John.
Huh?
Oh, it looks like we've left some people out.
Does anybody have an extra one?
Yeah.
Okay. Alex, whatever.
Alex Johnson.
Thanks, Alex. Alex was awesome in this whole process. She helped get all the, working with John and Mark and just getting a bunch of the behind-the-scenes stuff done. She didn't like to be out in the forefront, but she was awesome and much appreciated. She really kept us on track with a bunch of stuff. So I just couldn't be more thankful for this team and all the work that they put in. It was two, two weekends of getting out of the building and two weekends of getting back into the building with coordinating that with different move teams. They were just phenomenal in the way that they all worked together. This is a true team and I appreciate it so much.
This is a classic example of what I used to talk about as an enterprise approach to managing county government. And these folks from Health Department, Business Services and Finance worked so closely together. I really appreciate it. So this is the CAO teamwork award. Thank you, folks.
Yep. So you guys are going to have to get front and back. If you'd have seen all the rekeying and all of the things that we had to do, Chris was instrumental in getting that, all the locks down, secure all of our lease facilities as well as coming back and doing our main building. So thanks, Chris, for all your work. Come on in here, squish in here. We get all the extra stuff in there. Ready, everybody? One, two, three. And I'm going to do just one more. He's setting one light. One, two.
What John didn't say is how really well it went and smooth, at least from where I was watching, and those people made it possible. So pretty happy about it. And now...
Mr. Chair, I had nothing to do with it. I watched also. But I really do appreciate the work these folks did. It was a phenomenal, phenomenal piece of work to get them in and out that quickly and that easily. Well, not easily, but they did it well.
All right. So now we'll get to this aforementioned long consent calendar. Would you wake me up when it's over and make sure I don't miss this?
It is a really, really long one. Commissioner Carlson is blessed to not have to be here today, so I can read it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Under Business Services, I'll move the consent calendar. First, under Business Services, approve recommendations to uphold pay grades for two classifications, number 099, Library Assistant, and number 369, Code Enforcement Officer, and to adjust pay grades upward for five classifications, number 098, Law Librarian, number 370, Code Enforcement Aid, and number 503, Health Educator, number 517, Health Educator III, and number 518, Health Educator II. Under Health, approve an order appointing Carrie Mueller as Ambulance Service Area Plan Administrator. Oh, that's good. Got rid of, did you get fired?
Kind of.
Okay. Receive ambulance service area administrator's recommendation to consider recertification of Marion County's Ambulance Service Area Plan and schedule a public hearing for October 11th, 2017. Approve an intergovernmental agreement between Marion County Health Department and Marion County Sheriff's Department in the amount of $310,000 for mobile crisis services between July 1st, 2017 and June 30th, 2019. Approve a contract for services with Salem Health for $176,906 to provide acute inpatient psychiatric services from January 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2017. Under Public Works, receive hearings officer decision dismissing conditional use case number 17-23, Youth With A Mission, Clerk's File Number 5732. Also under Public Works, approve a resolution ratifying a declaration of a state of emergency for the Brighton-Bush area and a declaration rescinding the original declaration. I think the second vice chair got to do that overview.
Yes, that's true.
Also under Public Works, approve an intergovernmental agreement for the right-of-way services with the Oregon Department of Transportation for widening of Hayesville Drive to be complete by October 31st, 2019. Approve an intergovernmental agreement for right-of-way services with the Oregon Department of Transportation for 45th Avenue Bike and Pedestrian Improvements to be completed by August 30, 2022. Approve an intergovernmental agreement for right-of-way services with the Oregon Department of Transportation for Silverton Road Little Pudding Bridge Replacement Project to be complete by August 30th, 2022. Approve Amendment Number One to an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation adding $120,000 in state funds to the Delaney Road Project in Turner with a term ending August 30th, 2022. Finally, under Public Works, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for an exchange of federal funds for up to $940,000 for surface transportation fund exchange. Under the Sheriff's Office, approve a grant agreement with the Oregon Department of Corrections in the amount of $250,008 between July 1st, 2017 and June 30th, 2018 for a diversion program to benefit families with minor children. Also under the Sheriff's Office, approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Salem-Kaiser School District in the amount of $119,313 for School Resource Officer between September 1st, 2017 and June 30th, 2018.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Approved. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved. We have two action items this morning. The first is approve an order directing the Title III funds of approximately $482,172 be used to reimburse future expenses for search and rescue and other emergency services provided on federal land in Marion County. So we have Tej Parek and Sergeant Shane Burnham are here. And Tej, why don't you start out? And I could hear it 100 times and still not keep it all square. Just what these Title III funds and where do they come from?
Sure, Commissioner. For the record, my name is Tej Parek. I'm a management analyst in the Board's Office. And we're, I'm here today to ask the Board to consider approving a Board order to initiate approximately $482,000 in secure rural schools funding for search and rescue and other emergency services as per public law 110343. To answer your question, Commissioner, I was just going to give a brief overview...
Go ahead if it covers it.
Okay. I was just going to give a brief overview of the federal uses of the secure rural school funds and then turn it over to Sergeant Burnham from the Marion County Sheriff's Office who leads the actual search and rescue missions carried out on federal land in Marion County. So as a background, Marion County's received the secure rural schools funding for the past 15 years, ending in 2015, '16. On the first year of the funding, the county received approximately $5.6 million and in the last year approximately $2 million. Secure rural school funding comes from two sources, the National Forest and BLM lands in Marion County. Counties receive the secure rural schools funding as a lump sum and then choose how to apportion to Title I, II and III, subject to certain restrictions. For example, for the National Forest funding, county select either 80 or 85% of the lump sum for Title I. And of this amount, 75% is then apportioned to county schools and county, to county roads, I'm sorry, and 25% for county schools. Similarly, with the ONC, with funding from the ONC lands, county select either 80 to 85% for Title I, which actually gets, counties can deposit into the general fund. Of the remaining 15 to 20% of the lump sum under both National Forest and ONC funding streams, counties can only use up to 7% of the lump sum for Title III projects and the remainder for Title II projects. So counties have limited purview over the Title II funds. These actually fall under the jurisdiction of the Hood-Wolamit Resource Advisory Councils and the Northwest Oregon Resource Advisory Council of the Bureau of Land Management. Counties really only have full jurisdiction of the Title III funds from both of these revenue sources, but they're restricted by the secure rural schools guidelines on how they can be used. And in 2008, the use of the Title III funds was restricted to only three categories. The first is to carry, first is to provide homeowners assistance with implementing techniques to increase protection of people and property from wildfires. The second is to reimburse counties for search and rescue and other emergency services performed on federal land. And thirdly, to develop community wildfire protection plans. So in 2007, the county commissioners directed that all Title III funds be used for public safety on federal lands. And the Marion County Sheriff's Office has used these funds for search and rescue and other emergency services. Since under federal law, the cost for search and rescue emergency services can only be reimbursed after they occur, Marion County budgets $20,000 annually for search and rescue and then reconciles the budget at the end of the year, depending on the number of search and rescue events that have taken place. It's estimated that the county will have approximately $482,172 in uninitiated Title III funds as of July 1st, 2018. And federal law requires all counties initiate their Title III funds by September 30th, 2017, and obligate them by September 30th, 2018. So staffs recommending the Board initiate the $482,172 in Title III funds under category II to reimburse the county for search and rescue and other emergency services performed on federal land. Once the Board approves the initiation, the county has to publish the proposed use of these funds and open a 45-day public comment period. So with that, I'm going to stop for questions before turning it over to Sergeant Burnham.
I don't have any.
Yeah, thank you. Tej, thank you. And I appreciate the presentation you gave us earlier this week too, the spreadsheet. Just a couple, I guess, one question. You mentioned obligate the funds by September of 2018. First one was appropriate.
So we have to initiate the funds, which means we're just selecting them and then...
This year.
Correct. And obligate means we actually fund the project at that point.
So, and John, maybe you can help me with this. Tej, so if we don't spend the funds by next year, by September 2018, if we don't obligate those funds for search and rescue, do we lose those funds?
That's correct. We have to give them back to the federal government.
So there's no extension at this time?
That's correct.
So we need to work on that. Barb's watching. We need to at least work on the funds that have already been allocated to extend them so we can use them in the future.
That's correct. And I believe Barb is working with our lobbyists.
Yeah. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Tej, if we obligate those funds, does that take care of the situation? If we actually get the dollars obligated and not necessarily spent?
That's correct. So there is a federal definition of obligation and finance is not here to explain it, but there is a federal definition of obligation. And since we have to observe the federal law, since this technically is a federal grant, we have to conform with what the federal definition of obligate is.
So follow-up if I may. So what you just said is that we don't actually have to have 400, whatever, $480,000 of search and rescue to reimburse ourselves by 2018. There's another technical term to obligate that money without actually having expended the resources. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
So we won't lose it?
No. We, as long as we initiate the funds by September 30th this year, and then as long as we obligate the funds by September 30th next year, we will, we will not lose the money.
Yeah. So I guess the question is what does obligate mean? And that's what we need to, that's what I'd like to know, what that means. I think we need to find that out.
Okay.
I see Bruce, I see legal counsel starting to come up, so.
Go ahead, Bruce.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioner. For the record, Bruce Armstrong, Senior Assistant Legal Counsel. We've had some discussions about obligating and we, our intention is to follow a similar process to what we did, are doing today, which is to bring forward a form of resolution or order where the commissioners commit the dollars to be expended by the Sheriff's Office or to reimburse the Sheriff's Office for these similar services. We're having some other discussions about whether we create a form of agreement, internal agreement, that obligates them. Our intention is that these funds will be expended for that purpose and so we want to memorialize that. But for now, the deadline is in a few days to initiate and so that's why this order was brought before you today. But again, our intention is to follow a similar process and state that the commissioners are obligating these funds and committing them to be used for this purpose. And the, and I believe that is sufficient, that meets the, that meets the test of obligate. Because the commissioners are committed to and will bind those dollars to be expended for that purpose.
The only question comes up, if there is some change that loosens up the uses of them, we just make a new resolution that captures that change or what?
And clearly, for, at this point in time, with the order that's before you today to initiate, we have flexibility if there is a change after the fact. It's less, it's less clear if they are obligated, maybe there's a different answer to that question, but that's what we'll deal with down the line.
Okay.
And that's why I think there's a lot of work being done currently to, to get the law loosened up for the uses. And then, so we have this next year to maneuver, not maneuver, to correct or adopt a new plan.
Okay.
But there is flexibility over the next year.
All right. Thank you. Anything else? Go ahead.
Good morning. Shane Burnham with the Marion County Sheriff's Office. Thank you for the opportunity to come this morning. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our search and rescue teams and then give you five different case studies on searches or missions that we've had so far this year on federal... on federal forest lands. The makeup of Marion County Search and Rescue, we rely very heavily on our volunteers. We have six volunteer teams, and those team members fluctuate between 80 and 100 volunteers annually. All these people are trained on their own time, and they meet state certification for search and rescue. Each different search and rescue team also provides its own equipment and does fundraising through their own nonprofits. Those teams are Team 18, which is our ground search and rescue folks, teenagers on up into their mid-20s. Jeep Patrol, which is our four-by-four unit, and they also provide radio communications. SARCOM, which is our radio communication unit dedicated just for radio communications. Special Vehicle Unit, which brings ATVs and UTVs to searches. Our search and rescue chuck wagon, which feeds all of our search and rescue members on search missions or major events. And our search and rescue posse. Again, all of those are volunteer members. The non-volunteer members is our overhead team. These are members of the sheriff's office through all different divisions that provide the management of the search missions. Currently, we have eight full-time deputies that are assigned to the overhead team as additional duties to their regular full-time job. So, they come from the jail, from operations, from enforcement. These deputies are trained in utilizing the National Incident Command structure and system, and they're also highly trained in initial search management. Our overhead team and our volunteer team members are also able to respond and do respond to assist other counties once they've gone through multiple operational periods and exhausted their resources, so we're available to assist throughout the state. Full-time deputies that work primarily up the canyon are tasked with search and rescue as their primary duty as first responders. So, if we get a search and rescue up the canyon, up North Fork, Saniam Canyon, those deputies are Deputy Mark Farron, who's assigned to our Canyon Patrol, Deputy Dave Zahn, who's assigned to our Marine Patrol, and then me, who does search and rescue and supervises those other two. With Deputy Zahn, Deputy Farron, and I, we are able to handle several missions through the year before it actually grows into a large mission because we're able to respond quickly to that. Examples of that are if somebody gets lost and they're able to call 911, if they have cellphone service, we get their GPS location. We can map their location and go to them or actually talk them out of where they're at. We also respond to motorists stuck in the snow when they can't get out. A lot of times, up in the high country, tow companies won't respond, so we go up there when their lives are in danger and take care of that very quickly. Another part of our search and rescue is relationships with other agencies. I see this as being very important, especially as recreation grows in the North Fork recreational area as well as up the Saniam Canyon. I've seen the number of users grow over the last five years, as well as the number of our missions grow. These relationships include relationships with other sheriff's offices, like I mentioned before. When we run out of resources, they'll come in and assist. The U.S. Forest Service and Bureau of Land Management, Oregon State Parks, they provide quite a bit of infrastructure for us. Marion County Emergency Management and our local fire districts. So, moving forward, I'll go through five significant calls that we had in 2017 that highlight differing search and rescue activities in Marion County, specifically on federal forest lands. On May 22nd, we had a drowning at Three Pools on the North Fork of the Saniam River. This was a 24-year-old male who jumped into the upper pools and never resurfaced after struggling. There was very high water flow in the area due to the heavy snowfall and runoff during the time. Upon initial response, Marion County Sheriff's Office responded. Salem, Jefferson, Albany, and Syo Fire Department's water rescue teams responded, and they were supported by the State and Fire District and Gates Fire District. Swimmers that were in the water immediately after the call, within an hour, were able to locate this young man. The following day, Marion County Search and Rescue volunteers, along with our overhead team, assisted the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office dive team, who responded to the area. Our volunteers actually carried the divers' equipment to the dive site so they could have an extended, the divers would have extended time rather than tiring themselves out. Divers were unable to locate the victim due to the dangerous conditions, and he was located two days later downstream. Again, our search and rescue volunteers, as well as our overhead team, and the Salem Fire Department water rescue team responded back and were able to do a body recovery on that. On June 17th, we were called to Wetstone Mountain in the Opel Creek Wilderness for a medical condition. The call came in at 5:00 PM. This was a 28-year-old male that was three miles up on a trail on Wetstone Mountain. He was reported to be having difficulty breathing. He was vomiting and in shock for an unknown reason. State and Fire, Gates Fire, as well as Lions Ambulance responded immediately, as well as Marion County Search and Rescue and our Jeep Patrol, Team 18, and SARCOM. Fire medics hiked in immediately to stabilize the patient, who had slight improvement when he was given an IV, but he was unable to hike out. Our ground search and rescue members hiked equipment in to assist the fire department, who were ill-equipped to stay out overnight. I was able to contact the Army Air National Guard, who flew a helicopter in. This was an extended operation. They, the helicopter arrived at midnight. Again, the call came in at 5:00 in the evening. Our search and rescue teams were able to move the victim to an area where the helicopter was able to actually hoist the victim, and then they provided assistance on getting the remaining rescuers down out of the, off the mountain, as well as their equipment. Lynn County Search and Rescue Team also responded to assist us because we had to prepare for an extended litter carry in case the helicopter was unable to recover the victim. So, we kind of ran dual missions at that time. He was hoisted from the helicopter and, or to the helicopter and then flown to Salem Hospital and survived. At 2:30 in the morning, all of our units finally made it off the mountain and cleared, so this was a pretty extended mission. July 31st, we did a fire evacuation in the Mount Jefferson Wilderness. We were contacted by the U.S. Forest Service Whitewater Fire Command, who requested the sheriff's office search and rescue respond into Jefferson Park. If you're not familiar with Jefferson Park, it's up in the Mount Jefferson Wilderness, and it's quite a hike into this wilderness area. So, there's really no cell coverage. There's no way to notify people other than physically hiking in there, making contact with campers on the Pacific Crest Trail, and notifying them that they need to leave the area. We initiated a command at the Detroit Ranger Station. GP, Team 18 and our Jeep Patrol, as well as Deputy Mark Farron, hiked into Jefferson Park. They were supported by our SARCOM, as well as our overhead team. This was an 18-hour mission to accomplish. They covered roughly 15 miles of trails during that time. August 19th through 22nd was the Great American Eclipse. SAR Command was established at the Detroit Ranger Station. Another thing that happened during this timeframe were the Whitewater fires, so we also had Fire Command contingencies set up at Whitewater, or I'm sorry, at the Detroit Ranger Station in case we had to do any other evacuations for that fire. Our SAR volunteer members were staged at the Elkhorn Fire Station on the North Fork, as well as at the Detroit Ranger Station during this entire timeframe for hasty response to any search and rescue callouts that may happen in the area. While there were no major incidences to be reported during this timeframe, our search and rescue teams and our search and rescue overhead team were able to accomplish training goals that we set out through the year. This is required training for all of our units, so that was good use of that timeframe. Some notable things that we were able to do during that time as the search and rescue overhead team, we worked with Emergency Management, who had their command trailer set up right next to ours. They brought up their satellite communications trailer, which provided Wi-Fi to our communicate, to our command vehicle. This last year, we received some satellite tracking devices that I can send out with our search teams, and we can map in real time where they are. We were able to use that technology to kind of gear that infrastructure up so we can use it for further search and rescues. Of note, during that timeframe, our search and rescue chuck wagon served 865 meals to search and rescue, Emergency Management, volunteers, and all of our partners, and the cost of that was $2,399. So, that was a significant savings to the county by that volunteer group. The last one I'm gonna talk about is a mission we just recently had, and I kind of have some numbers attached to it. This was September 8th. It was a missing person at the Phantom Natural Bridge, which is above Detroit. And the complainant reported that a high-functioning autistic 40-year-old male was dropped off at the trailhead the day prior and was to return the following day, which was September 8th by noon. He was by himself and had equipment and some experience for overnight camping and backpacking. He did not return, and Marion County Search and Rescue and the Sheriff's Office was notified. Members of the Marion County Sheriff's Office, our search and rescue, Corvallis Mountain Rescue, Polk County Search and Rescue, and the Air National Guard took part in the search. The victim was located alive the following evening, so he'd been out in the elements for two days at 5:30 PM. He'd become lost and had wandered across country in very steep terrain, which is why we had the Corvallis Mountain Rescue Team respond. This country was very steep, heavily forested, and like I said, he had spent two nights in the elements to include a major thunder and lightning storm that dumped a lot of rainfall. When he was found, he had heard the helicopter searching for him and started climbing towards the sound. He then heard sound sweeps being conducted by searchers, who were able to locate him. They immediately fed him on the trail, warmed him up, and he was able to hike out and was reunited with his brother. This search was, again, over a two-day period, and to me, as a search manager, we were running out of options. We had searched all the trails in the area, and I was becoming really concerned on where we were gonna find this young man. Kind of breaking it down, approximately 102 overtime hours were incurred by the sheriff's office, which would be reimbursed by the Title III money. Approximately 500 volunteer hours were donated to this county by our volunteers and out-of-county volunteers, and more than 40 people were involved in the search. So, that just kind of illustrates what a major search entails. So, in close, I just wanted to give you the quick overview of our teams, the types of missions we respond to. Now, granted, these are only the missions that are up on federal forest land. We still cover the rest of the county. And then, how the Title III money is spent on our search and rescue overhead team deputies.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the 102 hours, Sergeant, were just on the one?
On that one search.
Right. And those are the, those are the types of reimbursements that would qualify from the Title III funds that we're allocating or that we're initiating today? Okay. No, I just, I thank you for coming forward and sharing with us, because I, I know you, your teams are, I mean, I don't understand it. It was great to hear all the different, the six different teams that you have. I think it was six you described. I know Commissioner and I got to go up and see a little bit about what was happening over the eclipse weekend, but doing a ride-along with Deputy Mark Farron and seeing how hard he works and how long he works, and I just really appreciate all you do and your teams do. And I think it was, you know, people of Marion County were talking about, you know, maybe six, seven individuals here that lives were saved, sometimes not. That's gotta be hard, too, as well, but really appreciate all you do, and thanks for coming in today and sharing with us a little bit about how these dollars are used. Hopefully, we can get some movement in the federal government to have them understand why it's important. And I think the one thing I've heard that maybe we didn't talk about today was the, how we used to use these funds proactively. And we had, what, at one time, we had three or four deputies in the summertime up there?
Yeah, well, we had two full-time deputies year-round, and then my position was funded as the third position up there, and we don't have those positions anymore.
Right, so we've absorbed some of that into our general fund dollars, but the proactive as a result of these, and I'm just gonna say this on the record, that the federal forests, not only are they burning up because they're not being managed right, we don't get the dollars even more to protect the people that are in those forests. And somebody in Washington, DC, needs to hear that and understand that, that these forests are not only burning, but people are going into them, and because we can't be proactive, we end up with more extensive searches versus having deputies up there that are, that are able to help people before they even get into trouble. So, thank you for all you do, and appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
I'm glad, too, that we have this capability and appreciate the work you do. The personnel was one, but the other thing that we used to be able to do, or should be able to do, is training and equipment that you need specifically for these things. So, I hope they open it up and let us use it where we need to. So, if you're ready.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve an order directing the Title III funds of approximately $482,000, $482,172 be used to reimburse future expenses for search and rescue and other emergency services provided on federal land in Marion County.
I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? I'm here. Go ahead.
Just, HP, how, it says approximate, but it's down to the dollar.
Well, the reason it's, oh, sorry. Commissioner, the reason it's approximate is because we still, we're minusing the $20,000 that we've budgeted for 2017-18, and so the $482,172 is what we think we'll have at the start of July 1st, 2018.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes again. Thank you both. Thanks for coming in, too.
Thank you.
Our next item is under Public Works. We consider approving the recertification of Marion County's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System. Brandon Reich is here to talk about it. We recertify this every year, as you'll find. It saves county residents money, and we do what we can to help. So, we wanna go through it all? Brandon, I'm sure that's what you're set up for.
I can, just real brief, relatively briefly. So, across the nation, most communities participate in the National Flood Insurance Program of FEMA. You have to participate in order to be able to qualify, to have federally-backed loans. And generally, the NFIP is the only provider of flood insurance. So, across the nation and in Oregon, around 10% of communities that participate in the NFIP also do the community rating system, which is a means where the FEMA looks at the resources that the county applies to managing in the floodplain and rewards citizens with a discount on floodplain insurance. Discount ranges from 5% to, I believe, 45%. Marion County is a Class VI community. Being a Class VI community means we're in the top 8% of communities that participate in the CRS. So, 10% of the communities participate in CRS, and then we're in the top 8 of that top 10%. So, it's rare to be a Class VI community. Class 7s and 8s and 9s are much more common. And then, there are a few communities with a higher rating, get a higher discount, 5, Class 4s. There's a number of lower-class communities that have a higher discount up in the Washington-Pugent Sound area. Being a Class VI community means that residents in the county floodplain save 20% off their flood insurance premiums. And if you're outside a floodplain, you can still get insurance, and you save 10% off the premium, which is generally lower anyway because you're not in a mapped floodplain. In Marion County, there are over $70 million of insured structures and contents with flood policies, and the savings is over $50,000 for Marion County residents. The average savings is around $160 per flood policy. So, the savings in Marion County on the flood insurance premium come predominantly in two different ways. The first is, if you build us a standard house, not in Marion County, in most communities in a floodplain in Oregon, there's a one-foot minimum elevation, and you're gonna pay around $600 a year for a flood insurance policy for kind of an average newer size, newer value house. Marion County, for years, has required a two-foot elevation, and that two-foot elevation off the top saves a third, saves residents $200 off their premium.
Brandon, I'd like to interrupt you there. Brandon, I'd like to interrupt you there. And this elevation is compared to what, 100-year plan or what is it?
Exactly, yes. So the goal is to elevate the first floor, the floor that people walk on and live in, not the crawl space, but elevate that above the base flood elevation. And the state, the federal minimum is zero feet above BFE. And so water sloshing, overlapping or differences in floods mean you're going to get some water into that house. The Oregon minimum is a foot above the base flood elevation, which provides some security. And in areas that are mapped, a foot can be good. Foot can be good for a while until development pressure builds upstream. Marion County has two feet. And I've actually had a person tell me once, "I don't want to build two feet. That's a long ways up." And then the person came back, really, like eight months later, and said, "Thank you for having me build two feet up. I was in a flood, I was in my house, and I was wash, I was watching the water wash to the bottom of my, of my, of my floor, floor joints." And I thought, "Well, good. I'm glad you were above it." And that's what kind of damage, and we talked about that. And I was like, "Why, why were you in the house when it was flooding?" That's kind of scary too, because what if it had kept rising and gotten into the house? But, so two feet is also good in Marion County because we have some unmapped floodplains. And two feet gets, means you don't have to do some of the, the engineering that you'd have to do otherwise. Because two feet, if water's two feet, FEMA should have mapped it to great detail because that's quite a bit of water. CRS discount in Marion County then saves residents an additional 20% for an overall savings of almost 50% between elevating it an additional foot and the CRS savings. So why would you want flood insurance? This is a kind of really quick plug for flood insurance. A standard homeowner's policy like for fire or theft doesn't cover flood damage. When you get a, when there's a flood event, federal grants and loans are available, but there's a lot of times flooding occurs on property and there is no federal declaration. And then there are no abilities for residents to get a grant or to get a loan. In a house, even a few inches of water can cause a lot of damage. The water can wick up the walls and, and damage the carpet and contents and different structures like a furnace or something could be damaged and very expensive to replace. If you've got a federally-backed home loan, you have to have flood insurance. So CRS program is very inclusive. It's very broad. It looks at everything the county does. Could impact flood insurance and the likelihood of FEMA encountering a premium or countering a flood insurance request from a county resident. So the way we maintain our drainage ways and keep those clear, having an emergency operations plan and the natural hazards plan, having a strong building code system that we apply, the way we, our floodplain ordinance, of course, the way we manage not filling in streams or dumping in streams material that shouldn't be there, looking at the erosion sedimentation that over time could fill up streams and exacerbate or change the nature of the flooding, how we outreach with citizens to share information about flooding and about the other standards for the county, and maintaining our flood insurance information and the floodplain information that's available to the public at all times. They look at that and many more aspects, and they award the, the rating to the county or to any jurisdiction. They look at these components. So always it's, you know, can, how can you approve the county rating? And we're half a class away, 250 points. So 250 points in the CRS system is a, is a real fair chunk of points with the way CRS works. For instance, when you look at the stormwater activities, maintaining drainage ways, a city applies an urban stormwater standard. So for the, the stormwater section of CRS, a city will retain, say, 98% of the available points because they apply that urban standard all across the city. Well, the county, we have some areas that are urban, and we have some areas that are rural. The urban areas are inside the urban growth boundary, outside the city. And because of the way the CRS shakes out, the maximum points that we could achieve on the stormwater are 40% of the maximum because we don't apply urban stormwater standards in rural areas. So we have, so between being a city and being a county, there's some significant differences between that. And there's some things that counties can achieve, but it, the overlap is not perfect at all. There's some areas in the flood, in the county floodplains that aren't mapped to great detail. To map these with more detail would give some additional CRS credit, looking at the flood depths that have happened in the past and more information on historical flooding or all types of maps that we could include that would provide better credit. Also, if we have these maps, we'd have to manage the floodplains to these, to these additional maps and, and the new information. Watershed master plan with other jurisdictions is, would be another avenue. CRS really looks at how you manage the whole water system for the county and how it overlaps with other watersheds in other counties and cities. And so as you're filling these in or as you're channelizing the water and what are you doing to, to affect and to change the way the water flows through your community. Just a heads up, there was a lawsuit, is somewhat settled out of court. There's an agreement between the National Marine Fisheries Service and FEMA. NIMFs up there, National, told FEMA that you, you need to manage the Dangerous Species Act in a different way in Oregon. This has come to Washington, it's come in bits and pieces to different jurisdictions around the country. The last we were told in writing is that there will be new mapping eventually, new floodplain standards to that mapping that would apply. And sometimes the development might be excluded from some areas of the new mapped floodplains. You, Oregon Land Conservation Development has a good website that has information about what they call the Biological Opinion. It involves National Marine Fisheries Service. If you use a search engine and type Oregon FEMA NIMFs, those little terms come up with some pretty good information, both with Oregon DLCD and other information that's out there. We're kind of on hold finding out, it's kind of a counter lawsuit now, and we're kind of on hold to see where that heads. Things have slowed down significantly, but at any time, some of these things will pick up quickly. People have questions about anything I brought up here, they can always contact me, my 503-566-4175 or send me an electronic mail. And every year, we recertify, the CRS asks that the board recertify that we're continuing to meet the requirements or the aspects that we got credit for. Every five years, CRS comes and does a cycle visit, which is essentially a very in-depth audit of each of these categories that they could give us credit for. And we maintained our Class VI rating even with some significant changes in the program, how they shifted a lot of things around. And this year, we're recertifying that we continue to do the things that we got credit for. So with that, I'm available for any questions you have.
Do you?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, thank you, Brandon. And I'm, I'm reflecting back to our meeting we had in Turner recently with Congressman Schrader's and his staff there. The numbers you put up here, you know, $320 for a house for flood insurance, is that, is that just a, a number that you kind of pick up as an average, the $600 you started with? Because in our conversation with these new, and this doesn't have anything to do with the new maps, I understand that. This is just our, our credit for what we do to help discount the flood insurance. I guess I've got to get to my questions here. Is the $600 a made-up number?
No. I've talked to insurance agents about that. It's, it's what you'd pay for a new house built to current standards under the existing map. You're going to end up getting a pretty good rate relative, especially with the discount.
Okay. So what we discussed when we were sitting there in Turner with the city man, city manager of Turner, the, we were talking about rates going up because of all the, the damages that have been happening, New Orleans, Florida, the East Coast, and are being raided with them. So that $600 is going to go to where, in your opinion?
They're all approaching actuarial rates. So new homes being damaged, existing homes being damaged, and homes that were before the flood maps came up being damaged. And they're all, FEMA looks at those homes differently and says, "Well, how much damage are we paying out for these different types of homes?" And all those rates are going to reach what they call the actuarial rate. They're going to, the rate, the rate that the payer, homeowners pay for insurance will reach the rates that FEMA is paying out for damage on those types of homes. What Turner's encountering is a couple of things. Not only are they having to pay eventually those actuarial rates, the new homes they build in Turner, if they keep them to the current standards and if they elevate additional, they should have actually fairly good rates. However, existing homes that were in a floodplain before now have a new base flood elevation. And so before, maybe their first floor was here and their base flood elevation was here, and they had a decent rate. And as this first, as the BFE comes up because the maps change, their rate gets worse because they have to pay more and more. And if the BFE, if it's an older home and it was built before they even considered the floodplain in Turner, and that new BFE is above that floor, they're going to have a really tough rate. They could pay a thousand bucks a month for insurance. So it changes drastically depending upon where that house is. And those existing homes that are now below the BFE or really near it, they get a grandfathered rate for a while, and then it starts to climb to actuarial rates. And that rate's pretty hefty because those are homes that are below the BFE. And across the country, those kinds of homes get really big insurance claims.
Thank you. I, I'm glad that you said it, why you said it, because that's what I heard when we were there, that it could be a thousand dollars a month for some of these people that live in Turner as a result of these new maps that are, that are coming out. And then the last, the last thing that you mentioned was a counter lawsuit. So NIMFs is counter-law suing FEMA? FEMA sued and now, and are these government agencies that are just using federal dollars to sue each other?
I'm, I'm not sure where the money comes from, but I assume it's federal dollars. And NIMFs said, "FEMA, you're not managing, you're not applying the Dangerous Species Act like you're supposed to. You're violating federal law." That's the best I know about how to explain that. The counter lawsuit is actually people who would be impacted by the changes. It's real estate groups. I'm not exactly sure who all has signed on. I only know a little tiny bit about it. And they're just saying that no federal law isn't meant to be implemented this way. NIMFs back off and don't require these things. So we'll see where these all head out.
Couple of small points. So a property owner in Turner, if he, he or she razed their house, jacked it up, they could get out of that situation. Is that correct? How do they certify that?
That's right. So one of the first things they'll do is get an elevation certificate, figure out what's out there, and then see what kind of rate they'd pay. And then based on that, they've, they've got options. And one of the first things they can do is to put additional bigger floodplain openings because they're different than just venting for under a home. And that can drastically reduce the rate right, right off the bat because it changes the nature of what's considered under the house. And that can make an impact. If it's already elevated a little bit, openings will make a big difference. And then after that, they've got the consideration of elevating. One thing that's out there is, once you get flood insurance, if you get flooded, you can get, which is not a good situation, but to recover from that, FEMA will provide additional money called increased cost of compliance. And it's something like 30 or 35,000 dollars. And it's to bring the building up to current standards. So you can use that money to elevate the structure. If you get flooded, you get a floodplain, you get a flood insurance money, you can elevate that structure an additional amount besides what was damaged, you can elevate it to try to keep that from happening in the future. So there are opportunities like that once you're into the flood insurance.
Now, little, excuse me, go ahead.
Yeah, only if you're flooded.
But only if you're flooded. So there's no advance, it's, it's only after I have a disaster that I?
Exactly.
And in the meantime, I'm paying this high premium, so there's no advance, common sense, never mind.
There are ways to get the money ahead of time. It's pre-mitigation grant dollars. And usually, it's a, it's a group of, of homes or a bunch of homes, a city or jurisdiction will apply for a bunch of homes that are all in the same situation. And they'll say, "All these homes, together, we want to elevate all of them because we all know that they're all paying a lot of flood insurance, they can't afford it, and they're all in danger of being flooded." And so we'll get a big grant for everyone and elevate all the homes at once. And that's pre-mitigation grant dollars, and those are hard to get, but they are available.
So, Mr. Chair, so, so one of the things that I know the congressman left with was the, the actuarial rate of trying to be regional and, you know, have, have FEMA be able to, to do that on the insurance so, because we're not the same as New Orleans, obviously. So I don't know if we'll be able to make any movement on that, but what you just said there would be really important that we help or stay in touch with Turner as this progresses and you, you're following it, Brandon. I really appreciate it that if there's a way we can help apply for those types of grants or, or with, you know, state congress relationships that we have to help those people over there, it'd be really good. I hadn't heard that before, so thank you.
The, the money is very difficult to get. And it's easier if the property's been flooded over and over, competitive across the region. But one of the things Turner is looking at is a ways to keep the water from hitting the city to begin with, or at least shifting the timing of the water. And if you can do that and prove that up, you can have a new study for Turner that could get people out of the floodplain because the water has shifted. You talked about regional rates, and something I, I heard recently from an insurance agent is Lloyd's of London, this has kind of been, kind of a rumor of sorts for years, but now it's true evidently. Lloyd's of London definitely is providing flood insurance policies on some properties are willing to do that. And they're significantly less than the FEMA. And I asked, "Were they covering the same contents? Are they looking at the same requirements? I mean, they still want things to be elevated?" And so, yeah, it's pretty much the same. There's still standards and there's still the same content coverage. But the reason it's less is because our region is seeing less losses from floodplains. So when you look at how much you should pay regionally for the premiums, then Region 10 here in the Northwest is experiencing different values of losses than the rest of the country. So Lloyd's alone, based on that, will assign lower premiums in the Northwest. Now, if we had some big floods and things, some things happened, that could change. But for right now, our region does appear to be different to that insurance company.
One more thing. So Brandon, I saw the list of things you checked off of maybe 20, 30 items, so I know it's pretty thorough. And then in your one slide, you talked about mapping. Are you, are you asking for or wanting to pursue some additional, more comprehensive mapping that we should be doing that would help both us and, and our citizens?
The mapping is very expensive, hundreds of thousands to achieve. And it would be areas that don't have the more detailed study right now, like the Pudding River, even areas of the Willamette. However, FEMA right now is remapping Willamette from Albany to Newburgh.
They do it. It isn't something we do.
FEMA is going to. They've already started kind of a, the very beginnings of a process. And there's a lot of chunks in there that actually don't have the detailed mapping. And so sometimes when people have to build their, their insurance wants a detailed base flood elevation, and they've got to determine that particularly for their property. And it can either be easy or pretty difficult. So it's either inexpensive relatively or very expensive to determine that. So that'll be useful to have that more detailed mapping all along Willamette and maybe partway up the San Yum, that that's, that's on its way. The other properties, it's, it'd be, you'd really have to consider, it's not worth chasing for the CRS points because the Pudding River is maybe 15% of all of our floodplain. So we do all the mapping, spend however much it would be, over 100,000 probably to, or more. We get 15% of the possible additional mapping credits. The maximum would give you 15%.
Doesn't get you the 250, does it?
No. We might be disappointed. We might get like 50 points for doing that, you know, all that work.
But for our own safety, someday, we may have to do that anyway, not just for CRS.
And a lot of those properties are pretty big. And the, and they can, they can, they have to be out of the floodplain when they build. They can find ways to be out of the floodplain in those zones. And what they put in those zones tend to be barns and shops and things. And a lot of that flooding on the pudding is sheet flooding where it just flows more along the ground. It's not the velocity flows like you see on the San Yum and the Willamette and some other, other rivers too. Even the pudding up near Aurora has more velocity flows than the area down south, the Little Pudding, that you get into some of the, the zones that don't have that detailed mapping.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
That's good. Thank you.
All right. If you would, then.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a recertification of Marion County's participation. Approve the recertification of Marion County's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program's Community Rating System.
I'll second the motion. Any other discussion? Don't hear any, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes once again, Brandon, annually, but thank you for your continued work in monitoring this and making it better for people. All right. That's the end of our action items this morning. We have no public hearings. Last thing to do is read the place we'll be together in this coming week. And so tomorrow, the 28th, Thursday, noon to 1 o'clock, we have the Liberty House Champions for Children luncheon at Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street, Northeastern Salem. Monday, October 2nd, calendar review at 8:30 in Southern Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeastern Salem. That's followed at 9 o'clock in That's followed at 9 o'clock in the same location by management update. And then Monday, 1 o'clock to 1:30, the Marion County Extension and 4-H District Meeting, also Silverton Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street. And that's followed at 2 o'clock on Monday by a work session having to do with a financial forecast, again held Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, October 3rd, solid waste planning at 9 o'clock, Silverton Conference Room. Wednesday, the 4th, our next board session will be 9 o'clock here in the Senator Hearing Room, 1st floor, 555 Court Street. Afterwards, we go to Woodburn at, at noon to 1 for the Woodburn Marion County Meeting at Luis's Taqueria, 523 Front Street in Woodburn, and then come back to Salem for a CCTV taping at 2 o'clock in Studio 1, CCTV 575 Trade Street in Salem. All right, anything else we missed?
Good, good informational meetings today, educational.
All right. I don't have anything, so let's call this meeting adjourned.